You know, everything that we've been able to accomplish with the CDBG funding. On behalf of the committee, we just want to say thank you for the work that you do. A lot of people are appreciative of the work that comes out of this, this department. We get calls all the time about folks that want housing repairs or that want to see these vacant lots, you know, be occupied and, and something to be done with, you know, a lot of these different properties. And so you all touch a lot of that and we just appreciate the work that you do. So, thank you.
Yes, Councilor Smith.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you for making our jobs easier. I can honestly say that from Alice to Jason to the CRRs, it really means a lot to me, the way you guys step in and really handle city business, no matter what's going on in the neighborhood meeting, whether it's peaceful or we have a little confrontation. The way you support the neighborhood associations, right, making sure that they're using city funding adequately, making sure they gain their priorities straightened and, um, where is it? Attorney Douglas, thank you for transforming the land bank and thank you for having the vision all those years ago and really implementing it because you're really helping us not only with vacant lots, but helping to improve homeownership in communities of color. Uh, so I really want to thank you for that. Dr. Dr. V, you know, you're my girl because I really have seen, I've been on the council five years and community development is at the top of its game. From, uh, as Council Moore said, critical repair programs, helping the elderly people in need to help their homes. Really, I think it really matters, um, how your house look and how your community looks. It really matters about your mental health, your physical health, and I really appreciate everything you've done. All of you guys have done from doula services, um, to healthy eating, uh, to providing, I know you guys have this on the agenda about homeownership for city employees. So I think it's really, really, um, it's really, really awesome what you guys have done. I think Birmingham has transformed really because of you all and I don't think we give you guys enough kudos. So thank you for all that you've done. I look forward to continuing to work with you and improving not only the district but the city. Thank you.
Council Williams. Um, I put my name in the hat before Crystal covered it just about everything. But I just wanted to also thank y'all because genuinely, especially my CRRs, y'all make, uh, our job a lot easier, which Council Smith just mentioned. And it is so nice to have, um, someone that has your back in, um, in those meetings, especially when, um, maybe there's misinformation in the neighborhood and they do not understand, um, maybe a process or something like that. And so before everyone's ready to, um, to strangle you, um, you guys have our, have our back. And so I genu- genuinely appreciate that, uh, very much. I know, um, Alice is looking forward to, um, the, uh, the new, the travel. I am the only one that voted against it, Alice. Um, but anyway, seriously, thank y'all for all y'all do.
All right, Councilor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, everybody said everything I wanted to say. So what I'm going to say is that I love community development and I love the neighborhood association system. Yes, I wish more people participated, but I think it is absolutely critical that residents have a place to go to get information, to get help, to meet with their other fellow residents that they never see because everybody's always in their car or on their computer or on their iPhone or anyway. So I just think that what you do is critical and that the city of Birmingham would just probably just implode if you weren't there. So I know Alice does have a lot of fun with her job and she gets to, uh, she gets to mediate some really fun discussions, but, um, but we, we appreciate you, Alice, especially because I know, I can't imagine really, but, um, thank you for what you do. And well, see, my neighborhood is the troublemaker, so. Yeah, so, um, yeah, I see some acknowledgement of that. So, um, so thank you. Just thank you to all of you for what you do because we do appreciate you, really. Uh, you keep our fannies out of the flames sometimes and we appreciate that. So, thanks.
All right, Councilor Tate.
I just could not let the morning go by. Thank you, Dr. Thomas, Caroline, Alice, Jason, Andre, Melody. Who am I missing? Herman, um, for the outstanding job that you guys have done and how you have leveled up community development, the many conversations that you and I have had about collective moving and building and, and making sure that we centering their voices and listening to those that are in community. That is so important. And then taking the vision that the council shares with you. You know, what people want to see and what people are, you know, have, want to have.
Be visionary and thinking, just you kind of seeing all y'all up here at the same time. You kind of realize how many things fall under that one umbrella. And so we depend on like different people for different things, not really realizing, uh, that y'all all are kind of in the same bundle. But, uh, no, it's just, just a great appreciation. I think people spoke about the neighborhood meetings, but, uh, just seeing the talented people have the room and, and things to be visionary and execute big ideas. So, uh, keep it up. As always, feel free to do more out in District One.
I just want to take a minute to recognize all the folks that you guys work with, the dozens of partner agencies that help, uh, deliver the mission of community development and, um, really provide a safety net for a lot of folks in our community that otherwise, you know, would be pretty much on their own. So thank you to all the partners who aren't represented here today for their work in helping deliver the mission of community development.
Mr. President, I got a note. Uh, we're wrapping up. I think the two photographers want everybody to stay in place so they can take a photo and think they'll stand behind you. My last note is Kelvin Datcher intentionally pushed Alice to the front and I want y'all to know he's hiding in the back.
If I would have known that, I would have tailored my comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, that concludes America's report. Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'll read our statement on conduct to business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clerk, could we please read through the consent agenda?
Okay, our consent agenda starts on page three with items four, five and six. Page four, we have items seven, nine and 10 on consent. Page five, we have items 11, 12, 13, 14 and 15 on consent. Page six, we have items 16, 17, 18, 19 and 20 on consent. Page seven, items 21, 22, 23, 24 and 25 are on consent. Page eight, items 26, 27, 28, 29 and 30 are on consent. Please note that on item number 27, the address should be 3418 27th Avenue North. That's 3418 27th Avenue North. Page nine, consent items are items 31, 32, 33, 34 and 35. Page 10, items 36, 37, 38 and 39 are on consent. And on page 11, item number 40 is all consent and we have three addendum items.
Okay. Um, do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item coming from this consent agenda? Councilor Williams.
I'd like to add two consent, uh, addendum item 41, 42 and 43.
Others? All right. We have two items that are now marked as, uh, consent that are public hearing items to any members of the, the, uh, the audience wish to remove those items from the consent agenda. Seeing none, uh, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
All in favor, let it be known. I say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
All right, the consent agenda passes. Ms. Clerk, can we please read our first item?
Okay, um, please note the first item, uh, scratched, public hearings, not a public hearing. Just giving notice to the council. Item one, a notice of the withdrawal request for an appeal hearing from Walter P. Scott III of Walter Scott LLC. On behalf of Florida Properties of Florence LLC on denial, application and permit to develop an automated car wash facility to be called White Cap Car Wash LLC. Again, that's just an item for notice purposes. So next item will be item two. Item two, appeal hearing of Michael J. Douglas of Leek Douglas and Moreno, PC and Walter P. Scott III of Walter Scott LLC on behalf of Vulcan Storage LLC and SHJ Development LLC. Plus Properties LLC on denial and application permit to develop an automated car wash facility to the, to be called Title Wave Auto Spa and accorded with ordinance number 90, um, 24 dash 15 adopted by Council Morris the fifth, 2024. And this is an item, um, public hearing item. Our motion to just get item four is on the floor. All right, item is before you.
All right. Do we have a member of the staff that was introduced, introduced or speak to the item?
We can have Attorney Bernard to come up and provide some legal analysis.
Okay.
Good morning, counsel and, uh, good morning, Mayor, staff. Julie Bernard, um, I serve in the office of City Attorney. And, um, item two is an appeal that's before you today on the council in, uh, early March passed a moratorium on automated car wash development. This is related to some analysis that the city is undergoing related to infrastructure and some zoning and land use plans. As you know, the city is getting into the final stages of, um, rezoning the entire city, um, to, uh, issues that were raised in the comprehensive plan. So those, uh, those issues have raised as the city has, um, seen, you know, more car wash applications coming in and some of them are in places that are being studied for particular avenues of development. There was a desire to have a moratorium, uh, that allows a, a, a bit more time for us to complete some of that study and plan, um, and, and get that, uh, complete and through the council. So the moratorium provides an appeal for anybody who's affected, uh, by that moratorium. If they're going to be delayed in getting a permit or other approvals from the city, then we have built in an avenue for them to appeal to the city council, uh, with a public hearing. So the council can hear specifically where they are in their project, where they are in their plans and, uh, you know, and other issues that relate to the location.
Okay. Is the applicant for the appeal present?
Morning, City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be before you today. I've got Alex Perry here with me from, uh, Title Wave. My name is Mike Douglas here with the firm Leek Douglas and Moreno. We are here today to talk about the moratorium, um, that Attorney Barnes just outlaid. It's, uh, 24 dash 15. And I'm here on behalf of Vulcan Storage LLC, who is the seller of the piece of property. It's actually two pieces of property, 2001 and 2017, Richard Arrington Boulevard. I provided each of you with a, a notebook of different items that I'll be referring to and I figured that would be the easiest way for us to reference it. And we'll be jumping around a little bit, but the one thing, I think you probably all know where this is, but under tab eight, I have a current picture, a drone picture taken. So you can see where the two concrete slabs are there off of Richard Arrington and 21st Avenue South right there. So that's the pieces of property that I'll be referring to, um, during this, uh, presentation. And so with Vulcan Storage LLC as the seller of the property has contracted in with SHJ Development LLC, um, who is the Title Wave company. Title Wave is a company out of Thomaston, Georgia. That's one of the largest automated, um, car developers in, in the country. They have over 250 locations nationwide, um, and they've entered into a contract for over $2 million to purchase this piece of property. The property in question, um, is supposed to close on May 7th. As it stands now, we cannot, you know, we obviously can't close. So we first, on May 4th, submitted this letter of transmittal. If you look under, uh, tab one, you'll see everything that was submitted there. And then we learned on May, I'm sorry, March 5th, that the ordinance passes. That's under tab two. And the tab does not reference our letter of transmiss- transmittal at all. It's for the beautification welfare of the city. But if you'll see under tab five, I'm, I'm sorry, tab four, we write our letter asking for the appeal, which is responded to under tab three. And the city says our appeal is being denied. I mean, our, um, the application is being denied. And that's the first time we've ever heard that the application was being denied. It was submitted in total on, um, March 4th in that letter of transmittal. And then we find out March 25th that it's actually been denied and provided this opportunity to be before you today. And so, you know, one of the things that we've come to learn is that the neighborhood association in that area does not want an automated car, um, development. And I can understand that. As somebody who's been living next to people building a house for the past two years, anytime my wife would bring up the fact that this has gone on for a long time, said, we should have bought the property. If you buy the property, then you can prevent people from doing what you don't want them to do there. But if it's a legal use, which this was zoned for this use in this area, then you have to go through the court system for some legal basis to try to prevent this development. Here, what happened was there was a plan put in place and you can see this, excuse me, under tab seven, that very specifically represents, it's an email on March 3rd, which is the day before we submitted our application, application in full for the final building, um, permit. And the day, and two days before, the city council met and added this agenda item for the moratorium with no notice for anybody who has a pending application or is in the process of doing that, which I understand there's one other in the city, a company called White Cap that's actually in construction this would affect. But if you see there, it says, um, Title Wave Car Wash Update, update from Lee Zell, the Red Mountain, um, Neighborhood Association President, that on the strength and merits of the opposition to an automated car wash in our neighborhood. And then the second paragraph says, Councilor Abbott and her staff are working on initiatives designed to prevent the proposed car wash. She believes those efforts are more likely to be successful before the developer submits an application for a building permit. So I'm not sure what all the other city council members knew when they voted unanimously to implement the moratorium, but you can see the moratorium doesn't reference my client's development. It just represents, references, you know, the, the, you know, needs of the city, which, you know, if, if there needs to be a moratorium, then in the, you know, further studies need to be done, that's one thing. But we're talking about a separate issue where this plan was hatched for the specific purpose of stopping this development, of which there was a known contract in place for over $2 million to purchase this piece of property. And not only have we submitted, you know, everything that needs to be submitted, there was additional things done, uh, by my client to try to, you know, assuage the city's concerns about traffic. We did a $25,000 traffic study, which was submitted and approved. We agreed to change the ingress and egress to not affect, uh, Richard Arrington. There, there was a lot of, you know, additional money spent, time and effort put in to make sure the city was comfortable with the, the project as a whole. And, you know, and then we get this moratorium and then ultimately a letter allowing us to come here before you today saying that our appeal has been denied, I mean, our, uh, application has been denied. And so if you look at this thing in the, in the bigger picture, if this is allowed to go forward and this development is stopped, it's essentially a taking because what we're telling the, the Red Mountain Neighborhood Association is that if they don't like something, all they have to do is get Councilor Abbott and come before you guys and block it. That's not the proper way to go about, um, preventing something happening on a piece of property that you don't want to have happen. And I think there's a lot of members from the association today and they're going to support. What I'm telling you is they're going to tell you they don't want it. If there's a health or safety issue specific to this development, um, then I'm, I'm happy to discuss that. I have an engineer here with me from Title Wave to discuss any of those type of issues that the council may have. But, but my client has done everything necessary to implement this development in a properly zoned area. And if it is blocked by this moratorium, which right now it officially has been, then we're not going to be able to close on that piece of property. And the neighborhood association essentially owns it because the seller of that property, you know, what can they, what can they put there? I mean, what has been, you know, heard in neighborhood meetings that they want to park there? And again, you know, I understand that, you know, there's, there's certain things I wouldn't want in my neighborhood, but things are zoned, you know, for certain areas and this is properly zoned for an automated car wash, of which also I saw some concern, you know, about it being an automated car wash. But Title Wave always has at least three, um, employees, uh, on the property at all times. These are, are open from eight in the morning till eight at night. Um, and so they're never, you know, unstaffed. There was a significant amount of work done on, uh, a landscape survey. And what they're proposing to do, as opposed to what you see in the picture now, is significant landscaping, you know, with, with tiered, uh, retaining walls, a lot of beautification to the property, above and beyond just putting a commercial structure there. So if there, there's any questions at this time, you know, what, I, I guess I should close with this. What we would, um, hope for, you know, to avoid any, you know, issues going forward is, you know, for, and I don't represent the White Cap people, but my understanding is that they're pretty far along in the construction process, to grandfather that process in, grandfather our application in, and then if there's a necessary moratorium that needs to happen going forward, then implement that, conduct the studies necessary. But, uh, otherwise, uh, you know, I would like to understand what the legitimate reason is for singling out this development, other than the fact that the neighborhood association doesn't want it, which again, I understand, but that's not a legal basis for blocking a development of this nature.
Questions from the council. Council Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. What did you mean when you said Counselor Abbott came before us?
Well, it, it, it references here.
Because I, because, because this is the first time I've sat in a hearing about this matter and I have not. Counselor Abbott hasn't come before me.
I wasn't referring to you. I, I was talking about the, uh, email that's under tab seven.
I'm, I've read it.
Okay. Well, that, that's what I'm referring to. Well, yeah, it was added to the agenda and it, you know, counsel, I mean, if you see on the moratorium, it says that it's proposed by Counselor Abbott. So I assume at some point, I don't know, you know, exactly what the process is, but I assume at some point it was presented to city council for a vote. I mean, I watched the YouTube video where you all voted unanimously for it. I'm not sure if you did or not, but it was a nine to zero.
No, sir. What you said is Counselor Abbott came before us. And so I was trying to figure out when Counselor Abbott had came before us because she did not come before us. But it's a very interesting tactic to come in the city council meeting and attack one of our colleagues trying to represent your client. I don't appreciate the way that you've represented clients in this chamber before. And I don't appreciate, appreciate the way that you have come represented your clients today. I think it's inappropriate and I think that there's a level of decorum that we like to have in these chambers that I don't think have been followed. That's all I have.
Counselor Abbott, do you have a question?
I think I'll hold my questions for a while.
All right. Um, this is a public hearing, so, um, members in attendance here are allowed to speak, uh, for or against. So I just ask that, um, you guys queue up over here and we'll have, have you, one at a time, please remember as you approach the microphone, that you will give everybody three minutes and please remember, um, to state your name and address.
Excuse me, before you, uh, speak, just because our system now you can't see, we need to speak. I did have a question for the developer and his attorney. So you mentioned you all did $25,000 traffic study. Will you give us a brief summary of what your traffic study, uh, revealed and who actually conducted the traffic study?
Okay, so I included, um, the traffic study under tab six.
I know that, we can see it, but the public doesn't know.
So that has a name. It's a skipper. And if you can discuss.
Yeah, I can give you just a very brief overview of what, what's in there. Basically, you know, the summary of it is that, you know, the car wash development will not produce, you know, impactful amount of traffic on that intersection, that location. We're moving six driveways to one off of the main road, which is a improvement from what's there now. Previous uses were a McDonald's and a gas station. We're reducing significantly the traffic that would be generated by those two businesses. We did, uh, put in a right turn lane just to help mediate any traffic on 20th Street. And then we worked with staff and they requested we install some traffic calming devices on 20th as well, which we've agreed to do, so.
What were those traffic calming devices? Speed, you all would implement speed bumps?
City staff requested we install some speed bumps along 20th.
Oh, okay. That's the, that's the first time I've heard of that. Um, okay.
We've been working on this since last June, you know, closely with staff. We've done lots of meetings, been very involved with staff. Staff's been great to work with. You know, we've been trying to tailor this to, you know, the best fit for that property that we can to be the least impactful. We're significantly invested in it. You know, we've got hundreds of thousands of dollars easily, um, invested in this project. So that's the reason for the appeal. You know, we're very far along in developing this parcel. I feel that, you know, because of that, we should not be prevented due to the moratorium.
Okay, do you have any other, do you have any other car washes in the city or is this your only one?
Not in the city of Birmingham, you know, Alabama, we probably have 20 other locations in Alabama.
Okay. Okay. And are those car washes in a similar, um, placement as what will be?
Intersections, main and mains.
Main, okay. Um, I had another question is, when you went to the neighborhood, how was that interaction? Do you remember what their vote was? I know they're going to speak, but I just want to hear from you.
So we went there and presented the project, tried to give them opportunity to have some input in the development. And it was, tried to portray to them, hey, here's your opportunity. If you want a certain kind of tree, if you want us to add some more trees here or there or water fountain, you know, whatever it is that you want to have some input into this. They obviously weren't very receptive to the project and didn't really provide much input except for, you know, they didn't want any development there, so.
Okay. Um, I reserve other comments for after the resident speak, but I do want to put this on record. Um, like Council Williams said, this wasn't, this moratorium was not passed against you. We were not being, um, vindictive or try to really prevent you from doing a project. We were just aware that car washes were, are popping up everywhere. I have a car wash in my district, but it's in the, it's off of Sixth Avenue. I have a car wash in my district, but it's in the, it's off of Sixth Avenue, but there's not, it's not the same type of busyness and where a lot of kids and people and bikes and we don't have a Vulcan Park across the street from us. And also we don't, it sees some business, but not a lot of business. But I don't want you to think that Counsel Abbott was like, hey, we don't like this project, that's why we have this moratorium, which you did actually say that. But that was not the reason for that. We did it because we feel like whenever we have a situation like a car wash and not saying that's what you're doing, where people are trying to get a quick rich scheme and then we pop up all over in neighborhoods and people are really advantageously disadvantaged against it. So we did it because we thought that was best and not because of your project. But thank you guys for being here today.
We appreciate that and I'll just kind of finish with, you know, putting a moratorium, car washes at that location or that zoning district, you know, the reasons for bringing it aren't specific to a car wash. I mean, it's going to be much nicer looking than a McDonald's. It's not going to produce any odors and things that would affect the residents. We're not open 24/7 like most fast food places are. So I mean, it's, I would hate for this not to go here and they get something that doesn't have a moratorium and go there and they're actually in a worse situation, so.
Mr. Douglas? So you're representing both the property owner and the developer?
That's right.
Is that right? Okay. But the title has not been transferred to the developer, correct?
It has not.
Okay. So Vulcan Storage still owns these two parcels, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to establish that.
The closing is supposed to happen on May 7.
Okay. Thank you. All right. First speaker, please again state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Lee Zell. I'm the president of the Redmont Park Neighborhood Association. My address is 2815 Argyle Road. I think your questions have essentially addressed what the neighborhood concerns are here. I have just a couple of things to say. There are a number of residents here to express their opposition to this development, but really more to express their support for the moratorium that the council passed early last month to give this, to give you all and the city in general an opportunity to evaluate whether this is an appropriate use, given the location of this particular car wash. You know, it's often said that if you can get 60 or 70% of Americans to agree on anything, you've accomplished something. Here, our most recent meeting in which a sensor consensus of the neighborhood occurred, we had some 55 or 60 people in attendance, that's probably three times what we normally get, and the view was unanimous that this, this particular development is an inappropriate use, given where it is and given some plans that the city has for redevelopment of Richard Arrington from 21st Avenue South toward Highland. I don't want to suggest that, that there has been any deliberate misinformation passed on to our association, but I will say just a couple of things. We had a meeting of our association last fall in which representatives of Title Wave and the owners were present and we heard a much different story than what you're hearing now. That was at a point at which there was a variance request pending. That's now, this plan has now been revised, so variance presumably no longer is necessary. But we heard some pretty disturbing things. We heard, for example, that this car wash would be open 12 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and then in order to break even, the requirement would be that at least 30 cars per hour would have to be serviced. If you look at the traffic study that's been submitted to you and all we've seen is a draft, it's a very, very different picture. Skipper is a very well-regarded firm. I have a lot of regard for them, I've worked with them before, but they can only work with the information they're given by the developer or the owner. And to suggest at this point that, oh no, we can make a go of it with a fraction of what we told you we needed is something for you to think about. Bottom line here is, as you have pointed out, there is no transfer that's occurred yet. There is no permit application that is, that has been pending yet. There is much to be considered here, both in respect to this particular development and in respect to how it fits with the larger plan that the city has in mind for this area, being that it is in the Vulcan Park area and the Cut area, because there are some, there are some plans that are, that I know you're aware of for some revisions and some improvements to 21st Avenue South. Anyone can say whatever they want about how many bushes they're going to put in and how many retaining walls, we all know what a car wash looks like. And we also know that there is no car wash that these folks have developed that is right next door to people's houses on a street that is not heavily trafficked and really can't be heavily trafficked. This doesn't just affect the people on Diaper Row, it affects the entire neighborhood and it affects the entire city. Because we're really talking about an area that's kind of a gateway, or the hope, the aspiration is that it will be a gateway into the city. The moratorium, we think, makes a lot of sense. No harm has been demonstrated by the applicant here by a, by a brief delay. There are real questions, I'm a lawyer, but this is not my area, land use and zoning, but there are real questions about whether the extant zoning contemplated this sort of use. And that's another thing for you, for you folks to consider as well. When this ordinance was drafted, there wasn't any such thing as an automated car wash. I'll finish here. And this is something that Valerie and I have discussed, and I think it's important. The most active commercial development in the United States right now is automated car washes. I don't think it's because we as a society have decided that our cars are dirty and that we need to wash them or, I think what's going on here is that this is a particular use that's tax advantaged. So we have a lot of private equity and venture capitalists that are, that are trying to make some money off of this. We've got car washes within a one or two mile radius of where we are now. I don't know how many more we need. I have exceeded my three minutes. I very much appreciate your attention and I think there are some other residents who would like to be heard as well.
Mr. Zell, before you leave, I, since you represent the neighborhood as neighborhood president, I'm curious, the immediately adjacent properties on 20th Avenue South and 21st Avenue South, I'm just looking at this, at the satellite view on Google Maps, but it would appear to me that 1910 21st Avenue South and 1915 on 20th Avenue South are single-family residential properties. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Elquinn, yes.
Okay. And they're, they're abutting to the proposed use on those two parcels?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Don Cosper. I've lived at 2803 Carlisle Road in Redmont in the city of Birmingham for 42 years. I'm an architect for 48 years. I'm director of the Redmont Park Historic District Foundation and a past neighborhood officer for the past 30 years. I was on the design review committee for '26 and the ZBA for '03. There's a number of concerns I want to address in the time we have. Number one is the fact that there's nowhere in the zoning code that mentions a car wash. I think that's been brought up before and you're interpreting a car wash as a garage. A garage is not a car wash. A garage may have 10 to 20 cars a day that are there for a service for a couple of hours. A car wash, you're probably there for three minutes and as you've heard before, there's going to be a number of cars. From a physical point of view, a car wash is typically on a dead level site and there is a significant elevation change between 20th Avenue South and 21st Avenue South. To create a giant level space there is probably going to require some pretty significant retaining walls on 21st and adjacent to the home that's on 21st. Number three, speaking of the site plan, I've never seen one. I've asked for one for months and months. I've called Gonzales Strength, they refused to give me one. The city staff told me that they didn't have one. It's kind of highly peculiar. In 42 years of dealing with development in Redmont Park, I've never seen advanced copies of a site plan. Perhaps you should ask the client. Number four, the pro forma we've talked about, I was guessing 200, 300 cars, according to what we just heard, it's probably 360 cars. As city councilors, you know that R A J is part of the road diet that's going to narrow down to two lanes. Skipper's traffic survey never acknowledged that. So where are those 200 or 300 cars or 350 cars going to go? They're going to go down 20th Avenue South coming and going. While noise and traffic's especially important, what about light spread in the evening for the houses that are adjacent to it? If it's a car wash that stays about 12 hours, even when it closes, is the light still on? I think that's going to have a very negative effect on their value. And then finally, I'm curious about why Title Wave is coming into this state. I've been to two of their car washes, neither has a single-family residence in sight of the two I saw. I'm not sure why they are not continuing to develop in Georgia, but I have heard that that might be a question you want to ask them. I think it's essential that you maintain the car wash moratorium and during that moratorium, I think it's important that you make sure that it's a garage, it's never interpreted to be a car wash in the future. And that's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I have three minutes, so I'm going to try to keep it brief. I live at 1915. I live directly next door. Mr. Drummond, I believe, has left, otherwise I would have a very specific question to him. Vulcan Storage, how many gentlemen own or are a part of Vulcan Storage? Because if you actually try to search LLCs and figure out who owns that property, it took me nearly five or six years and I live next door. And that was because abandoned cars were on your property. Walter Scott, how many times did I call you to ask you to move that car because it was being shot up with guns while my children slept next door? At least six or seven months. The Birmingham.
Please, please address your comments to the council.
As a business owner or property developer, they have already set the tone for what they have brought to our neighborhood. As a mother with two small children, opening a car wash on that street is going to land lock me that my children can no longer access that road. There's no sidewalks. Where's the closest playground? Where can I go? Where can I bring them? If there's two cars parked up, there's parking on the street, there's parking for, on both sides of the road. If cars turn out of that car wash and turn right and they don't see a child and they're not paying attention, how long will it be until a child gets hit or a dog gets hit? I've lost my dog on 21st. It was killed. My, he was five at the time, witnessed it. So that whole area is a disaster with traffic as it is. But these owners, Vulcan Storage, whoever they may be, I'm not trying to make personal attacks, the ability to reach them in the last five or six years, medical waste dumped on their property, the Justice County Health Department couldn't access it. There was cars, I mean, the riffraff, you can't reach them. They're always out of town, they're out of, so if they are in business with Title Wave, I think that sets the tone for what kind of business would be in our neighborhood and in our city. I will leave it at that.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Stranges and I live at 1915. I stoned those away.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Susan Barnacastle and I'm a lifer of 20th Avenue South. I've been there 41 years. I have walked the street.
Your address, please. Your address, please.
2044 20th Avenue South.
Thank you.
And I have walked that street daily for 41 years, through the lives of seven German Shepherds and 150 pair of tennis shoes. This is what I do. I can tell you who lives there, what cars they drive, why would they live in our neighborhood, and it's about location. Last night, I walked the neighborhood at 7:00. I had one car come down the street, one car that I needed to move over for because we don't have sidewalks, and it's a narrow street. We have a congestion problem at that light, it is a major intersection. One of our resident's son was hit head-on there and totaled his vehicle this week. This happens ongoing. It is a safety issue. People on 21st don't have sidewalks, they come to our street to walk, they come to our street to wheel their babies. We used to be called Diaper Row and then we went through a transition where we didn't have children on the street. We have six new babies on the street. We have 11 school-aged children on our street. We have a diverse population of people, a little bit younger than me, that have moved back to our street and invested a great deal of money in this property. We want to maintain this location. It is a private, nice, secluded area that most people don't know about. We found this street from our Realtor 41 years ago and drove by the street on Richard Arrington three times before we realized it wasn't a driveway. I worked at UAB for 25 years. The reason I live in that house, I was five minutes from UAB. It took me longer to get from my parking deck than my home to get to the university. We have many residents on our street that go to UAB and work. It has been a wonderful neighborhood. People that I worked with at UAB could not understand that I knew everybody in my neighborhood. I knew their names. We have a neighborhood and that's what we're trying to maintain. There is no way that the traffic study that was given is the same as the one that we were quoted back in September. If 30 cars go through there an hour, that's 300. I don't know if you realize it, but our street is a cul-de-sac. Halfway down, there's a turn onto 21st Avenue South. It's a one-block turn. So cars are coming down our street and they're going to have to go onto 21st Avenue South and there's a stop sign, there's no light, or they're going to go onto Richard Arrington. We have a history with a McDonald's that was there that was going to make a lot of money that shut down because it didn't. And then we had the acquisition of this property and I cannot say enough about the owners of this property not being good neighbors. So we asked that you, we're not trying to object to anything being built there, but a car wash, there's over 60,000 of them in the country right now, we don't need one. I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Kathy Adams, 2431 Aberdeen Road. I'm the neighborhood vice president. I would, excuse me, like to ask you to keep the moratorium in place so that you can get all the information you need. The idea of funneling 200 or 300 cars a day onto a quiet, narrow residential street is just, is terrible. And I think they're trying to push this through when the city really hadn't looked at all the ramifications. So I would hope that you would keep your moratorium in place and take a really close and careful look. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Yes, sir.
My name's Walter Scott and I live at 3632 Montadella Road.
Please pull the mic up.
Yes.
There you go.
Okay. I understand the neighborhood doesn't like the way our entity has owned this property and maintained this property. We bought the property and it already had a closed McDonald's on it and a closed gas station on it. There was a homeless person that moved into the gas station, so we had to tear the buildings down to kind of stop the damage, et cetera, occurring on the property. We had to remove the fuel tanks that were there at a very expensive cost to make it available for somebody else to use and develop because nobody wanted to get into the environmental issues related to that. So we spent that money on, and if you don't want anything to happen to it, it can sit there like it is. Nobody seems to like the way it is or the way we own it. And so what you're asking, or what this moratorium does, is say, well, then don't let anybody develop it and make something nice out of it and let it sit there. There are a lot of homeless people in town, everybody knows that. We went to a very great extent, when we had a homeless person living there, to try to get the community involved, to move that person to another place. We offered to pay for the move, we offered to pay for his housing, we offered to pay for a lot to get him off the property. But ultimately, interestingly, I guess, two days before the demolition of the building was contracted to occur, he set the place on fire and fire department. was contracted to occur, he set the place on fire, and the fire department had to come. But regardless, we've had lots of opportunities about what to do with the property. The neighborhood's been against every one of them. There's been nothing that's been presented that they've been in favor of, except potentially, I guess, donating it to them for a park. The, the permanent application process, just for history and background, there was a neighborhood meeting a long time ago, and the permit that was applied for or being applied for required a variance. The neighborhood came out against it in every way they could. So tens and tens of thousands of dollars of engineering later, a permanent application was made that required no variance, met every requirement of the city. There is a letter from the city saying that that use meets the zoning requirements. So everything required was done. And the whole purpose of having a permitting process that's transparent is for a developer, before they spend a bunch of money, they need to know what's expected of them. We knew what was expected of us. We met every requirement. We submitted the application on March fourth, or the application was submitted on March fourth. The next day, through a combination of the efforts of the neighborhood, working with Ms. Abbott, presented the moratorium. Now, I don't believe the rest of the commission did it targeted at this development, but I do believe the commissioner or councilman Abbott and the neighborhood were targeting this development. And I don't think there's any denying it when you look back through the emails. They say, you heard Mr. Zell say, there was nobody for it. There are lots of people in that neighborhood for it. They've communicated with me, but they are scared to speak out publicly at those meetings because they will be canceled and shamed. And car wash is a great amenity to a neighborhood. It's a positive community service. They used to be all over the place with, but they were in the forms of gas stations because gas stations performed the service for your car, the filling up of your car, the washing of your car, added wiper blades all. And as a community neighborhood, gas stations, they had the guy that came out and filled it up before you went away. The service industry changed, and now there's needs for cars, car washes. I don't know if anybody's driven around lately. My car, car's covered with pollen. It needs washing, and it's a service that's needed. As far as operators go, look it up. This is the Chick-fil-A of car washes. This is, these are the best operators of car washes there are out there. And as far as any implication that we are going to be in the car wash business, we, the former owners, we are not. We have a contract, and the neighborhood's known this, Ms. Abbott's known this, we have a contract to sell the property to an operator that does a good operation. They've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. We've got a contract for millions of dollars. And this targeted moratorium, and I'm not saying the council targeted, but I'm saying the neighborhood coordinatedly attacked, gathered their forces, and have tried to stop this. And if this is how government works, it's arbitrary and inappropriate. And thank you for your time.
All right. Kerry's, no, no, ma'am. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
I, I just, you mentioned that several other potential uses had been presented to the neighborhood.
Yes.
Can you expound on that and--
Sure, sure. Well, the, the first one that, and, and when I say presented to the neighborhood, it was not presented, it was discussed, and it was discussed with the neighborhood, and it was clear late in the morning. The name of our entity is Vulcan Storage LLC. When we put it together, the intent was to put a storage facility there. The immediate feedback was they would do everything in their power, everything they could do to stop that. We rethought it, and we said, well, you know, let's, let's not fight them over that one. Let's find something else.
You're referring to the two parcels that are, that are being considered today?
Yes.
One of the options presented to the residents was a potential use as a self-storage facility on those two parcels.
That is correct. That is correct. And it was before the self-storage facility right up the hill was put in.
Okay.
So that was, that was the original plan, is to buy and put up self-storage.
Okay.
That was, that's the reason for the name Vulcan Storage LLC.
Okay.
So, and then--
And when, you know, that didn't play out for whatever reason, was there something else before you considered--
Yeah, there, there have been several things. Property's been on the market for a while, and we finally made a contract and an agreement with the car wash folks. Several others came and went. Nothing-- few things got off the ground but never got fully developed. And so--
Okay.
We are where we are. It's, it's got some limits on what can be done with that lot, and, and some of those limits were very troubling for the car wash folks. There's over forty feet elevation difference between the Twenty First Street entrance to the property off of Twenty First Street and the Twentieth Street entrance. And that elevation difference on a small lot, it's, it's just around an acre lot. That elevation difference makes it very difficult and expensive to develop for almost anything. And so we, we looked at putting some retail there, and it just wouldn't lay out within reason to where it would be a reasonable return on the investment. We, we've looked at a lot of things, and they're spending a lot of money to fix that elevation issue. And they're taking what were, I think, six entrances from Richard Arrington Boulevard, Twentieth Street, and Twenty First Street, three businesses essentially there, and reducing it down to one business with one entrance off Twentieth Street. The, the three businesses before, if you'll recall, was the McDonald's on Twentieth Street, which had an entrance both on Twentieth Street and an entrance on Richard Arrington Boulevard. You had the gas station, which had an entrance, two entrances on Richard Arrington, and had an entrance from Twenty First Street that you came up a ramp. And then under the gas station, you had Wanaky's Grocery Store, which was a African culture grocer. And so you got all three of those businesses operating there, and now you're only going to have one. That gas station had been there forever, operated by Mr. Patel. He had, he sold beer and wine in there. He sold Playboy and Hustler and all your choice magazines. I remember as a teenager, all my buddies getting together and hopping in the car to go to wine, go to the grocery store there, try to get a Playboy. It's just, so for these people to say they've been there forty years and putting a car wash there is going to run down the neighborhood, I, I'm just saying rain check on that.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. So just wanted to provide some, some background. So as I think one of our speakers mentioned, you know, this, this is something that's not unique to Birmingham in terms of, you know, new development. And I would direct your, anyone who's curious, I would direct your attention to an article, a Bloomberg article dated February twenty-first by Patrick Sisson, that's titled, Why Are There Suddenly So Many Car Washes? And I think that article, you know, pretty well lays out the basis for the, the council's concern and the motivation for the temporary moratorium. So just providing that as background information.
Yeah, and, and I don't think anybody on the council, other than Mrs. Abbott, targeted us. I, I really don't. But I, but I think there was a clear targeting of this development by the process behind what put it in front of y'all to vote on. And I think it's fair to have a moratorium on car washes. I absolutely think it's fair. But this project is too far along to have it apply, and should be grandfathered--
Well, on that note, thank you, Mr. Scott. I would, I would like to ask--
And the harm that--
Mayor Woodfin, could we have Director Thomas come and talk to the, give us an update on the process of where this particular project was in terms of permitting and so on and so forth?
Mr. President and Council, to your question of who to come in, as I just shared with Mr. President, if it's okay with the council, the lead for the city of Birmingham is Attorney Julie Bernard. She can come up. We'll have the gentleman you referred to come in to flank her for additional information if needed, but Ms. Bernard can address what you just shared with me.
Councillors, thank you. P E P and B dot has, you know, provided some information through the Office of City Attorney about, you know, where some things are with this, with this site. And the, I think generally, a lot of what's been represented is correct. I think they would need to speak, you know, specifically to what information, you know, there is in, in their records. I know there's, you know, there's some other concerns that have been raised about infrastructure projects and things that I think B dot can speak to.
Let me just simplify the, the question.
Okay.
Has P E P issued a permit for this project?
I'm not sure I understand exactly the how do they. I need a little clarification. As, as to how do, how, how do they issue it?
No, not how do they.
Uh huh.
Have the, has P E P--
Oh, have they?
--granted a permit for this project?
No. To my knowledge, no permits have been issued. There have been some applications, some other steps that have been taken previously, but P E P would have to speak to the status. But to my knowledge, there's not been any, you know, construction or building permits or anything issued yet.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions from the council? Okay, yeah. Counsel Williams.
I just wanted to, thank you, Mr. Bernard. I just wanted to ask Mr. Scott, again, what the, I mean, you started asking him, but other than the storage facility, were there other potential uses presented to the neighborhood?
Not presented to the neighborhood, no.
Okay.
The, the, the storage was discussed with them. It was not presented. We didn't go to the neighborhood meeting or anything like that. The other potential uses, no. We never got far enough along to where we were applying for permits or trying to get anything done because that, to be honest, it just didn't work out. Yeah.
Okay. And, and you just, I, I got you.
Yes.
Also remember Mr. Patel very well--
Yeah.
--from my childhood years. But, but--
I think you're, I think your uncle and I were in the car together.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Appreciate it.
Counselor, Counselor Moore?
Oh, did he. So I just wanted to ask Mr. Scott, did you ever go to the residents to find out what they would like to see in that space?
No, sir. It's, it's been my experience, they've expressed that, that they want to park there, and none of them, the property was for sale. None of them came and asked to buy it. None of them asked for a price. None of them were interested in it. So, no, we did not. We're in this, not, obviously, we're business people trying to buy a piece of property and to make a profit, and there's no hiding that. That is exactly what we're trying to do within the rules and the, and the restrictions that are laid out and we believe to be in place for this property, and we believe we met all of them before this moratorium hit, was applied for. And all that, as I understand, it was left to be done, is to review the application, which our engineer assures us met all the requirements, and the only thing left was for them to issue the permit. So that's where we are in the process, and that is the harm that we will suffer if the moratorium is allowed to apply to this particular project.
Got you. And I guess the last thing that I'll say, or a quick question, how many people are in the audience from the neighborhood, firsthand? No, I, I didn't ask for anybody to speak. This is the time. And, and I asked that question because, you know, I think it was, you know, the statement was made that, you know, that Councilor Abbott and, you know, the residents are attacking this development, and, you know, if this is how city government works, then, you know, I don't think that that's right. And what I see here is, you know, residents that have, you know, mobilized, have organized, and this is exactly what we would like to see for our residents to do for their neighborhoods. Now, definitely, you know, nothing against you specifically or, you know, the development or anything like that, but we'd love to be able to see the organization of residents to get on the same page, to advocate for themselves, and do that in partnership with their counselor, right?
I understand.
That is how city government is supposed to work. And so we would love to be able to see this in, in other neighborhoods as well. And so those are the only comments that I wanted to make.
We made several changes in trying to work with them. We did, because orig, the original plan that was submitted, that required a minor variance, I think, for a trash facility that went a little bit into the setback, and an awning to go over where people would drive into the car wash was in the setback. And the setback was created by the front line of the houses on the Twentieth Street side. And those were the only variances, I think, asked for to begin with. There may have been one or two small other ones, but they were very minor, it seemed, setbacks were questioned. But at that time, the entrance to the car wash was on Twenty First Place. And we had the neighborhood meeting. They want, Valerie Abbott was there. They wanted a traffic study because they thought that would be adversely affect the intersection. And so we hired, Skipper was hired. Skipper did the study, and what they did was move the entrance to the car wash from the Twenty First Place side, which they had objected to, to the Twentieth Street side, and they added a turn lane into it. So a turn, there will now be in addition a turn lane, stacking lane, to turn into the car wash coming off of Richard Arrington before you get into the car wash. So, so a lot of accommodation was made to address their concerns and to try to make this amenable and acceptable in the process. And I'm not talking about just a stroke of a pen change. I'm talking about tens of thousands of dollars in engineering to move the entrance from one side to the other side when it involved a forty-foot elevation change. So this, this was not a minor change or accommodation that was made, and, and it was done to where a variance was not needed. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess I just want to state something else for the record. Mr. Scott has mentioned that there was, there are people, residents of the neighborhood that have, are in support of the project. I think all of our contact information is publicly available. I cannot recall receiving one communication from a resident of the Redmont neighborhood that's in favor of this, so just stating facts.
Mr. President.
Counselor Abbott?
I wasn't going to speak, but I changed my mind. I don't think I've heard my name called this many times in the twenty-two years I've been on the council, so let's hear it for Valerie Abbott. So I was, I was kidding. You know, I hate to tell y'all, but I'm doing my job as a city councilman. I'm representing the people that I represent-- You know, I hate to tell y'all, but I'm doing my job as a city councilman. I'm representing the people that I represent. The ones who may or may not have voted for me, so. What I want to say is, I know about a number of initiatives that the city has in the area. Richard Arrington Junior Boulevard is going to be taken from a four-lane of speeding. Traffic down to a two-lane with a turn lane in the middle. We are going to add room for people to cycle, to walk, to run if they're capable of it. To push baby buggies, to ride scooters, skates, whatever way they want to get there. We're going to make it where people can travel in other modes of transportation besides a big giant truck. So, I mean, we've even ended up, how many guardrails? We, we replaced the guardrails on Richard Arrington Junior Boulevard below Vulcan. About once a month because people drive through them. One car even ended up in a tree. So, we have a public safety issue here. On 21st Avenue, we have a project to narrow that street. And add sidewalks so that people are safe when they walk on that street because it is also a raceway. And we all know we have a problem with a shortage of police officers, so there's not going to be anybody there to catch them. Okay, so this development is at the corner of Richard Arrington and 21st Avenue, two streets. That we have plans for big changes that will benefit our residents and visitors. That's something I know about that I guess the developer doesn't know about because he's counting on all that traffic. That Mr. Skipper says is coming by to come in and wash their cars. Well, nobody brings their bicycle into a car wash. So, or their scooter, or their roller skates. So, the purpose of the, of the moratorium is for us to look at how this might affect. The North Side/South Side Framework Plan, which is part of our comprehensive plan, the Southern Area Framework Plan. The Richard Arrington Junior Project, which is supposed to start this fall according to Mr. Fowler's email he sent. Um, and the 21st Avenue Project, which is still in the early planning stages. So, we have all these initiatives, and this is just to look at how. All of this will mesh in together. You know, it's like a puzzle. There's a whole lot of pieces. A few of them have fallen on the floor. So, the city's plans are going to change everything in that area. And Homewood is cooperating with us, so, you know, we've got good friends over there. It's at the foot of Vulcan Park. One of, uh, it's the symbol of our city. Wherever our symbol of the city is right now, so. We know, because we're the city council, that we got behind the eight ball on the mini storage, self-storage, whatever you want to call it. It was the hot business to go into before the car wash business became the hot business. And we were having them pop up all over the city. We should have had a moratorium for them, but we just got behind. So, this time, when we read about the wonderments of having a car wash on every corner. We decided to do a moratorium to step back, take a little time to take a look at what we're doing. And see how it's all going to work together, and it's for every neighborhood in the city. It just happens that several of our major projects are happening in this spot. And I think I won't say anymore, but I appreciate the people who've come out, who actually live in the neighborhood. And would have to live with whatever goes on that corner. And the email that was mysteriously left out of the little notebook that I was given, it's not from me. It's from someone characterizing something that someone else told them, so. I haven't quite figured that one out, but I believe the moratorium should stand. And I am willing to move for a denial of this appeal at this time if no one else is ready to speak.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second for, uh, denying the appeal. Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, I believe we're ready for the vote.
That's good. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Alright, uh, that appeal is denied unanimously. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Next should be item three. An ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment. In the amount of $454.13 to execute a quitclaim deed to Teresa D. Hughes and. Over to Donalap for a seller property located in 128th Avenue T. Required by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens, according to the section 3 dash 1 dash 4C. The General Code of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, and this is, uh, first reading, so in order to pass it today, I need you see first.
I'm up for you see.
Okay, Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Clark is out. Counselor Moore?
Aye.
Counselor Member Smitherman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate? Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods?
Aye.
Counselor President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Alright, motion on the item, please.
Second.
Williams and Smitherman, I believe. Alright, any discussion? No, we're ready for the vote.
Okay, uh, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Alright, that motion passes. Next item, please.
Should be item eight, so, page four, a resolution electing five members to the Public Athletic Culture and Entertainment Facilities Board. Of the City of Birmingham is nominated by the mayor. One term expiring September the 15th, 2025. One term expiring September 15th, 2027. One term, term expiring September the 15th, 2029, and two terms expiring December 13th, 2029.
Do we have a motion?
I'm over approval.
Alright, Mr. Chief Mitchell?
Yep, uh, so, I will give the, the names. So, Frank Adams Jr., replacing Cora Coley. Term in September 15th, 2025. Danielle Hines, replacing Dr. Ronnie Rice, September 15th, 2027. Zandria Jones, replacing Justina Howard, December 13th, 2029. And then we are reappointing Mr. James Sullivan and Mr. Samuel Rue Moore. Um, September 15th, 2029, and December 13th, 2029, respectively.
Any questions or discussion? Counselor Woods?
Uh, Chief Mitchell was the second one.
Ms. Danielle Hines will be replacing Mr. Dr. Ronnie Rice.
Alright. I believe we're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Alright, that item passes. Next item, please.
Should be all the agenda items.
Alright, that brings us to the, our announcements. Counselor Woods?
Give me two seconds. Alright, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, real quick, the Apple Valley Neighborhood Association meeting that was scheduled for tonight has been canceled. Uh, the Spring Lake Neighborhood Association will meet on this Thursday at 6:30 PM at Huffman High School. The Echo Highlands Neighborhood Association will meet also this Thursday at 7:00 PM. Uh, they're meeting via Zoom. The Roebuck Neighborhood Association will meet on Monday, April 8th at 6:30 PM. That meeting is at, uh, the East Precinct, um, on Red Lane Road. Also want to shout out, uh, one of our bright young stars over in District One. Uh, Ethan Hill was presented with the Youth Service Award, uh, during the Congressional Medal of Honor Ceremony, or. Congressional Medal of Honor Society's annual Citizens Honors Awards last week. Uh, for his endeavors through his nonprofit Ethan's Heart's Bag for Blessings and his commitment to the homeless community. And so, just been very, very, uh, cool to see this young man grow up and evolve and, uh, increase his impact. And so, want to celebrate him for that, uh, pretty significant award, so, uh, shout out to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Wileham Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at 6:00 PM at the Wileham Library located at 4307th Avenue. Wileham, the Thomas Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at 6:30 at Mount Hebron Baptist Church. At location is 503 5th Street Thomas. The Cypico Finley Neighborhood Meeting will be held on Wednesday, April the 3rd at 5:30. At the Cypico Plant Community Room, and that location is 1530 Second Avenue North. And the North Birmingham Neighborhood is, uh, meeting will be on Monday at 6:00 PM at the North Birmingham Library. And that location is 2501 31st Avenue North. The next public safety meeting will be held on Tuesday, January the 9th at 1:00 PM. Please submit agenda items by Wednesday, April the 3rd. No later than 12 noon to Gregory Stanley at Birmingham AL.gov. And also, I'd like to extend sympathy to my chief of staff, Patrice Collins, who lost her grandmother, um, on last Thursday. So, please keep her family in prayer. Um, she will be funeralized in Mobile, uh, this weekend, so. Please keep Teresa and her family in your prayers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development Tourism Committee Work Session will be in Conference Room D and E. Uh, scheduled for 11:30, but it will be following this meeting because I have a sense that we will not be out by 11:30. Eastwood Neighborhood will be meeting Thursday, April the 4th at 6:30 PM at their regular location at Habitat. That is all.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April 17th at 3:30 PM. Here in the council chambers. Um, neighborhood associations, we have tonight. The Forest Park-South Avondale Neighborhood Meeting at 6:30 PM at the Avondale Library. If you have concerns or issues, I advocate for 311, even though we are having some issues right now, but. My Beham 311 works great, and it doesn't seem to be having any problems. So, if you have issues, take a picture of them and get the app and enter it into MyBeham311. Um, I want to thank my colleagues for supporting the moratorium today. I think it's important citywide for all of us. Because none of us know what's going to be coming to a street near us any minute now. And we do have a lot of wonderful plans underway that just aren't finished yet. I think that all of the neighborhoods zoning, all of the framework plans have just completed the long-range planning. And the zoning is actually upcoming for every framework plan, so we have a lot of work to do. And, um, it's important to the future of our city, and I think it's good what we did today. And thank you to Counselor Williams for coming out in defense of me.
Well, you know, you are able to spell check all the minutes for me, and so, I, I owe you one.
Oh, no, with you, it's the grammar. Just kidding, but thank you.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
Oh, oh, forgot one thing. Today is my sister-in-law's birthday, and I have to wish her a happy birthday, Martha Anderton, so.
Alright, happy birthday, Ms. Anderson.
We're always glad when anybody hits another birthday, no matter which one it is.
Counselor Moore?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. So, first things first, wanted to say thank you to all the volunteers that came out to the cleanup. Uh, in Collegeville this past weekend. Um, special thanks to the Black Warrior River Keepers as well. Um, that came out and helped to collect 350 pounds of trash, so. That was a lot. Uh, Brumming Heights, first Thursday, uh, will have their Neighborhood Association meeting, uh, at 1:00 PM. Uh, at the Brownsville Heights Community Center, um, this upcoming Tuesday, uh, or tomorrow, well, yeah, today, I'm sorry. Uh, today at 6:00 PM, Fairmont will have their Neighborhood Association meeting at Mount Carmel Baptist Church. Uh, Engle Nook will meet on Monday, uh, at 5:30 PM at the Engle Nook Rec Center. Uh, Woodlawn will meet on Monday at 6:00 PM at the Willowood Rec Center. Uh, and then Airport Highlands will meet on Monday at 6:00 PM at Pleasantville, Pleasantview Baptist Church. Uh, the Community Development Committee will, uh, meet in the council chambers tomorrow at 2:00 PM. And the Parks and Rec Board will have their meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. Uh, and that concludes the announcements.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, announcements for District Eight and the, um, Arts and Culture Committee. Um, the Fairview Neighborhood will meet today at 5:30 via conference call. You can call my office at 205-254-2304 to get the dial-in information. The Thomas Neighborhood is also meeting this evening. They're, they gather in person at Mount Hebron Baptist Church Thomas. At 6:30 PM. Uh, as you learned earlier, it is Community Development Week, so, um, remember that. On Thursday, April 4th, the Community Development Department will host a Will's Clinic. At the Boutwell Auditorium from 9 to 3, and slots are limited, so you can contact the department at 254-2309. To secure your spot. The Alabama State Council on the Arts Grants Portal is now open for operating support, arts and education, and project grant applications. You can go to arts.alabama.gov for guidelines and to find the applications. Uh, all submissions are due by June 4th at 5:00 PM. Also upcoming is the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute's commemoration of the 61st anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King's Letter from a Birmingham Jail. On April 12th at 10:00 AM. Whether you want to read or take part in the powerful words from the audience, we hope you'll join us along the way. Uh, readers will include officials from the city of Birmingham, the Birmingham Public Library, Birmingham Fire and Rescue. Civil Rights Foot Soldiers, and the National Park Service. That's on April 12th at 10:00 AM. And, uh, if you're looking for a fun way to get active and meet your neighbors, you can join us every Thursday morning, weather permitting. Uh, for a walk around the Crossplex. We meet promptly at the Starbucks and start around 8:00 AM. I mean, wait a minute, we meet promptly at 8:00 AM at the Cross, at the Starbucks. Thank you. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Smitherman?
Thank you, um, Mr. President. You know, Counselor Clark is about to get hot soon, so y'all gonna be okay? I don't know, I was in the gym this morning. I was about to die, honestly, it was so hot outside, but. Uh, Oakwood Place Neighborhood Association Meeting will meet today at 4:00 PM at Harrison Park Recreation Center. Mason City will meet today at 4:30 PM via teleconference. The, the dial-in number is 712-778-017. And the code is 843-426. North Tussville will meet tomorrow at Memorial Park Rec Center at 5:00 PM. Uh, West End Manor will meet on Monday, April 8th at 5:00 PM at New Hope Baptist Church. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will meet next Monday, well, this Monday, April 8th at 3:30 PM in the council chambers. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Uh, this Saturday, there will be two clamps in the district. The Birmingham Alumni Chapter of Capo Alpha Psi Fraternity will hold a community clamp day. They will gather at the Capo Complex located at 45 6th Avenue South at 10:00 AM. And then Magic City Lightbusters will have a cleanup this Saturday as well from 8 to 10 in North and South Tussville. Volunteers are needed. Um, they're asking to help bring the magic back to our neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you. Um, Pro Tim Alexander is attending the National Community Reinvestment Just Economy Conference. Uh, and that's why she's absent this morning. Um, for District Five. Um, you hear us announce every week that, um, there are neighborhoods meetings happening. If you live in the city of Birmingham, you live in a neighborhood with, uh, designated representatives. People who are, have been chosen by the residents of the community to represent that neighborhood. And as we saw this morning, neighborhood associations matter. Um, so, I encourage you, uh, if you live in District Five or any neighborhood, or any district of the city of Birmingham. You know, please make sure you know what neighborhood you live in. Um, when they meet, and, uh, who the president, vice president, secretary of. in, when they meet, and who the president, vice president, secretary of that neighborhood is. Because sooner or later, there will be some issue that comes up that you want to know to, who to get in contact with and how to communicate with your neighbors on that issue and organize and impact what's being done in your neighborhood. So in District 5 this week, we have the Eastlake Neighborhood Association that will meet at 6:00 PM at the Household of Faith Church tonight. The Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Association will also meet tonight at 6:30 PM at Avondale Library. The Waltham Neighborhood Association will meet Thursday, April 4th at 6:00 PM at the Southern Museum of Flight. Gate City Neighborhood Association will meet next Monday at April 8th at 4:00 PM at the Marx Village Campus of Hope. And finally, Oakridge Park Neighborhood Association will meet Monday, April 8th at 6:00 PM at the Harris Homes Recreation Center. The next Transportation and Infrastructure Committee Meeting will occur on Monday, April 8th at 2:00 PM here in the Council Chambers. Items can be submitted to the agenda by contacting Kimberly Phillips at kimberly.phillips@birminghamal.gov. And then finally, if you would like to volunteer for a neighborhood cleanup in the East Avondale Neighborhood, they will be having a cleanup on Saturday, April 20th, I believe that's Earth Day, 9:00 to 11:00 AM, starting at New Bethel Baptist Church located at 22, 222 47th Street South. Please contact Ms. Doris Jones, 205-602-6721 if you or your organization is interested in volunteering. Mr. Clark, I believe we are ready for our public speakers?
Okay, I think Mr. Adams spoke earlier, so I think it's Joanne Shaheed.
As your person, Mike, please remember to state your name and address. And you have three minutes.
My name is Joanne Shonara Shaheed. I live at 628 Green Springs Avenue South. And I'm here to request that the City of Birmingham, on behalf of many Christian Palestinians who live in Birmingham, as well as our Muslim brothers and sisters, are calling for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. I attended UAB years ago and I remember marching the streets, this is like 34 years ago, calling for human rights there and talking about how my people, my family who came from Ramallah and attend, and are Christians who have been calling for peace since then and before then. Things haven't changed yet. I don't know if you know, I have numbers since March of, this last March, that 30,000 people have already been killed, 13,000 children have been killed. It's almost too late. The entire area of Gaza has been demolished, the universities, the churches, the mosques, the hospitals. Just the other day, they attacked Ashraf Hospital, which is one of the few hospitals left in the area to treat people. Israel is not allowing aid to come in and out. If a truck happens to have scissors, medical scissors, they're supposed to go to the hospitals there, they do not allow the entire truck to come in, whether it contains food or water. Right now, the people are starving. I don't know if you know about this, but recently in the House, HR 7256, a bill that was introduced, is to reassess the United States' relationship with South Africa. Why? Because South Africa dared to call on the International Council Court and the International Court of Justice to investigate what was going on in Israel. And Israel, they have found, is indeed an apartheid state. And it didn't start just recently, it's been going on since 1948. 700,000 refugees, people have been displaced in 1948. In fact, many of them live in Gaza today. Most of Gaza, 80% of them are refugees, either from the, what today is Israel, or from the south of Gaza. There's no safe haven there at all. They've been told they can go to south Gaza, they'd be safe, but then they started bombing, Israel started bombing Gaza. One of the reporters there tried to go back north to her home, she's not allowed to go back. In fact, many of my relatives aren't allowed, haven't been allowed to go back since 48 and 67, who have homes in Jerusalem, but they were replaced by European Jews. And I'm not saying it, I'm not anti-Semitic, I'm not pro Hamas, we're just for pro-humanity. The findings, and I had said this before, the findings that South Africa found is really devastating. And the United States government has ignored it. We don't understand why, but we have an idea. There's a very strong PAC in Israel, a lobby in Washington, the AIPAC lobby, which lines the pockets of our congressmen. And if you look, there's a website called Open Secrets, you can see where, how much money our representatives are getting, including Brett, or Senator Brett, as well as Tuberville. I'm not sure about our representative, Seawell, I'm not sure that she receives anything. But not just for the sake of the Christian Palestinians or anyone else calling for a ceasefire, or the fact that Israel gets billions and billions of dollars from us, taxpayers' dollars, to destroy, to kill people, but because this is the right thing to do, this is the humanitarian thing to do. So please, Birmingham, consider like 70 other cities in the United States have called for a complete ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
This is Jahan Award. Yep. Let's say it.
I'm a little bit taller. Okay. Hi, my name is Janan and I'm a resident of Birmingham City. Can you hear me? Okay. I reside at 718 10th Avenue South, Birmingham, Alabama. I am a first-generation Palestinian-American. I was born, raised, baptized, educated, and I'm communally involved in Birmingham and I have been my whole life. I was going to come up here and give you a little background of myself as a Birmingham citizen, but with Birmingham being the backbone of the civil rights movement, I feel as if it's not necessary for me to stand up here and justify why I, as a Palestinian-American Birmingham resident, am having to ask my leaders to not only represent me and my family, but all other Palestinians living in Birmingham, all around Alabama and all over the world at this point. My grandparents packed up their lives in Palestine and came to seek safety in the US and Birmingham in 1973, when my father was just five years old, which to this day has been such a privilege for my family because we still have family and friends living in Palestine under apartheid and Jim Crow laws. There's a very loud, unspoken understanding amongst the Zionist community in Palestine that Palestinians are not at the same level or equal to them as human beings and they are openly living as third-class citizens on a land that their lineage is buried on. So imagine not being able to freely roam a city that you call home because of the ethnic background that you were born into. And I feel as if, if any state or city should understand that, it should be Birmingham, Alabama. So we all know the significance of the City of Birmingham and I'm just so disheartened at this point that I have to take off time from work to come show you that this ongoing genocide against Palestinians is affecting me, it's affecting my mental health and my physical health and my ability and desire to be social and continue to be a part of the community that I love. I grew up in Birmingham, I went to UAB, I was a part of diversity and equity and inclusion and sororities and I did all kinds of stuff. I love, I love being in Birmingham. But it's taken a toll on me to the point where it's hard to continue to be a part of those fun activities because I'm so drained of just having to explain the Palestinian struggle to people. And as our leaders in power and many of you being men and women of color representing the City of Birmingham, you should also understand just as well that this is no way to be forced to live, not for myself, but the people of Gaza. There should be no reason why we are 178 days into this disgusting genocide that people like to call a conflict or self-defense, but we all know it's the same ongoing hatred and senseless murder of Palestinians that we have been experiencing since before 1948. So my question is, what do we have to do at this point to pass a resolution, seeing as the resolution for Ukraine took 145 days to pass through this council? What do we have to do 178 days later to pass a resolution condemning the genocide committed by Israel and to stand with our Vice President Kamala Harris, who attended the march at Selma and called for a ceasefire? Within Resolution Number 129622, it clearly states that the casualties with our sister city of, I think it's Vinistia, Vinistia, Ukraine, from the Russian cruise missiles on July 14th, it killed at least 22 people, including three children, and injuring dozens of innocent civilians, though this does not account for any of the casualties that occurred prior to that attack. Sorry, I'm off. And while any amount of casualties is wrong and should be condemned, we are now standing here with at least three, oh, I'm sorry, at least 30,000 Palestinian men and women and children who are dead, trampled by tanks, showered with bombs and white phosphorus, and being humiliated by Israeli soldiers who are parading around on land carrying American-funded weapons on our dime. So I'm standing here and asking, what do we have to do in order to be qualified for the city council slogan, putting people first? If not all people, then what people? So I just hope that we can all connect and at some point come to a understanding of a resolution. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Chris Isor.
My name is Chris Isor. I live at 633 Idlewild Circle in Glen Iris, Counselor Abbott's neighborhood. I'm a labor organizer. I'm not Palestinian, but over the last seven months, I've joined the Palestinians and others in our area to help plan and protest and gather hundreds of people at six or seven different demonstrations against the continuing genocide that's happening in Gaza. I wake up every day in Glen Iris to the bells of a Palestinian church. I shop at a Palestinian grocery across the parking lot from Aldi on Green Springs. But I'm speaking today as a new father of a seven-week-old baby. When the reignition of violence happened in Gaza on October 7th, my wife is pregnant and likewise, a couple of my close friends, two Palestinian sisters, had a cousin in Gaza who was also pregnant. So every time that I went to UAB for an appointment, for an ultrasound, for a check on maternal health, on baby health, I was able to think about this parallel pregnancy happening in Gaza where, you know, my friend's cousin was unable to go to hospital for continuing care because the hospital had been bombed. They were unable to continue to get care in the north of Gaza and so moved to the south of Gaza, which was later bombed. There now, she gave birth in a refugee camp in the south of Gaza, which has itself been bombed, the refugee camp, waiting on aid, medical aid, food aid, things like that. Aid trucks that have been bombed. These are, it makes me feel guilty to be living here in this wonderful city that I've lived for 12 years, having a child and the kind of, in the relative safety away from the horrors of that, of that war. And I can't track the number of people that are dead in Gaza. Janan just said over 30,000. It's difficult to track any beyond 30,000 because every hospital in Gaza has been bombed. That's the equivalent of every hospital in Jefferson County, Shelby County, Tuscaloosa County, all together, all being bombed. And they're not being bombed by something completely far away. They're being bombed by American weapons that the United States has sold to the state of Israel. I also just completed my taxes, I hope everyone has as well, because we're running out of time. When I pay taxes to the City of Birmingham, to the State of Alabama, to the United States, those taxes, and a fraction of them end up paying for weapons that we sell to a state that's committing a genocide, that runs an apartheid state of division based on ethnic background, of restricted rights based on people's ethnicity. And that's something that I do not think that we should accept. In the City of Birmingham, with the proud history of civil rights activism and organizing as a United States that had a strong movement for, you know, for sanctions against apartheid South Africa, and, you know, certainly I, you know, had, for the last 20 years, have been, since I was in middle school, going to protests against American bombs being dropped on Arab communities, which is exactly what's happening to this day. The resolution that has been shared with the city council, it mirrors a resolution that the city council in Atlanta has passed in November, when dozens of thousands of people had not yet been killed during this war. It calls for a permanent ceasefire, an end to violence, an end to bombing and destruction in all of Gaza. It would be a statement from this city with a proud history of standing up for human rights, human dignity, and people's right to live in peace. And it would also call for an end to our continued tax dollars being paid to further an apartheid state committing the genocide in Gaza. So I understand that it can feel odd for, you know, a city council to be talking about car washes or ordinances or variances, to have folks come up here and talk about an international issue, but it's not an international issue when it's our money and our weapons that are being, that are committing this crime. And I would also say that I live in Glen Iris, just over the hill from us is known as Little Lebanon because it has a long history of having Lebanese and Palestinian communities in that area. Why are Palestinians in Alabama, in Birmingham? Largely because this is a continuation of a conflict, a genocide, a slow-moving genocide that's happened for over 75 years. So if you would like any information about any of that, I'm happy to give it. I know that the folks in the front row with the Kefias are, happy to give it. But as a resident of Birmingham, someone who has just birthed a child, I didn't birth the child, that'd be impressive, but as somebody who's raising a child, a new child, I didn't sleep last night, this is a brand-new baby. So if I sound a little unhinged, it's not because I birthed the child, it's because I didn't sleep. As somebody who's lived here for over 10 years, all in Counselor Abbott's district, and who has worked in the City of Birmingham, who is raising a family in the City of Birmingham, this is an issue that matters to me deeply. And it's not because I'm Palestinian, it's not because I'm Arab, I'm neither one of them. It's because I'm someone who is proud of the history of the city and is committed to an end to this type of violence across the world, whether it happens, you know, at the barrel of our own gun or a gun that we've given to somebody else. So I would ask that the council consider the resolution that has been shared with you all and really take that to heart. And if you need advocates from your own district to get in touch with you, we're happy to make that happen. We're happy to share this information and organize people, as Counselor Moore has said, to make this a reality. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Natalie Beany.
Good morning.
It's Natalie Betty, like Benny in the Jets. Unlike Chris, I did not spend my high school years advocating for peace. I was attending church camps and debate tournaments and beginning a life in academia and scholarship. I attended Samford on a debate scholarship. After graduation, I won a Fulbright Award to Germany where I studied Holocaust memory. And that was the beginning of eight years of academic study into Holocaust and genocide studies. I'm now a published researcher and scholar in that field, finishing my PhD. I take Holocaust memory, I take that particular genocide, I take my relationship with the Jewish community, with my Jewish friends incredibly seriously. It is because I take that relationship seriously that I've started working with my friends in the front row here, that I have seen what's happening in Palestine and taken the lessons that I have learned from eight years of academic study into the Holocaust, into genocide studies. And the lesson I've learned there is not that it was an exceptional, one-time event, but that there are patterns. There's language and discourse, there are policy and military actions that are repeated in other contexts that make it clear that there is genocide happening. I have also signed open letters with over 900 of my colleagues in Holocaust and genocide studies that say that Israel is on the precipice of committing a genocide in Gaza. I want to make clear in this time that this is not a partisan issue. This is not a partisan issue. Members of our coalition include members of the Jewish community and Jewish faith, organizations like Jewish Voice for Peace, that have called for also a permanent ceasefire. And so I want to encourage you all, as you consider the resolution, that this is reflective of a very diverse group of constituents. of a very diverse group of constituents. It's reflective of a diverse group of opinions, of backgrounds, of faiths. We have sitting in this room Palestinian Christians and Palestinian Muslims. There is a very diverse coalition that supports this. I'll also lastly speak, you all have received an email from me on March 4th, and I think I bumped it to several of you after words from Natalie Beany. I'm happy to resend that email, I also dropped off a physical copy a couple weeks ago in all of your mailboxes. I encourage you to read the information in there. I encourage you to reach out to me, to ask me, or anyone here, questions about it. Like I said, my career is in research, and so I try to cite everything in that document, right? It's cited, there's evidence. Nothing in there is kind of partisan opinion. Thank you so much to those counselors who have returned my calls, my requests, my emails, I do appreciate that. And I'd like to extend that offer to anyone else on the council, to meet, to discuss with either myself, any of my colleagues here, and I hope that you all can extend that invitation to councilwomen Alexander and Smitherman upon their return. Thank you.
Last name, Abu, Delal?
Pull the mic down, please. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Delal Abu, 612 Ninth Court South. Okay, I'm here today to talk about the ceasefire resolution, and it was my understanding that maybe we wanted some more questions about how this is specifically affecting us in Birmingham, and how it's applicable to Birmingham, although I do think that they did a really good job of explaining how it's connected. But I would like to give a connection of how this is related as a mother. So first, of course, we have a community full of Palestinians who are watching the genocide unfold right in front of our faces, and US is funding that genocide. We also, if this has not been stated, we have family members, friends and family, who are there in Gaza and in Palestine, who are also, as you can imagine, very much affected, and hopefully they're okay right now, I'm not sure. But as a mother, what is happening is greatly mentally, emotionally, spiritually, and physically taxing. And we know that how you, how mental and emotional stress affects you, affects physical health, and also affects the greater community that you are involved in. For example, I know a few community members who have had to resign from jobs due to not only being kind of ostracized for showing solidarity for Palestine, but they have also had to resign for mental health struggle, you know, struggling with that because we feel so silenced and unheard. But having to watch as entire generations of families are annihilated, or how Palestinian children are brutally slaughtered and left as orphans, or watching as Israeli IOF bulldoze over starving Palestinians, rendering them nearly unrecognizable, is beyond any words a mother can describe. Considering that recently Palestinian-American children have been attacked and murdered in the US, including the three college students, or the six-year-old child who was stabbed in Chicago, or what happened at Columbia University, simply because they are Palestinian, I do not feel safe, I do not feel that my children are safe here in Birmingham. How will we handle children, how will we, how will my children and all children be safe when dual American citizens who are serving in the IOF return to Birmingham after murdering Palestinian children while making a mockery, while doing that, making a mockery? And there are no protections in place for our children here. I'm concerned for their safety, and all of, all of the safety, excuse me. As a mother and a woman of color, I can't accurately depict the damage it causes to have to constantly prove that we and our children are indeed human, and that children who look like mine shouldn't be murdered, which I know is not a foreign concept that many of us mothers of color unfortunately endure in America. Israel has justified the genocide of Palestinian children, claiming the children will grow to be terrorists, which is not only degrading, but it is an extremely dangerous statement to make. Imagine if we use that logic for school shooters, or for little children who are wearing something that people deem as threats. Israel is slaughtering an indigenous population in the masses, and Birmingham, the city with the rich history and civil rights, is asking how it's relevant. Do I need to remind everyone that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere? Birmingham should be the first in standing against collective punishment. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. We'll say that Counselor Abbott and I had a virtual meeting with members of your group last week, and I think we're trying to achieve some balance. You know, one of the things that's at the, in our face with regard to, you know, this type of issue generally, is we need a ceasefire right here in Birmingham, Alabama. So that is something that we're trying to balance. I will say also that by no stretch of the imagination does the city of Birmingham, any of the people who are represented up here, we don't support genocide anywhere, whether it's in Gaza and Israel, or Ethiopia, or China, or South Sudan, or any of the other places where that is happening right now across the world. So please know that we hear you, and these are compassionate people, and I think we are with you in spirit, and we're trying to achieve how we can articulate that balance between local concerns, but also recognizing your concerns as well. Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Council President. I want, I just want to thank you all for coming and educating us on the issue in such a personal way, and reminding us of the Palestinian-Lebanese enclave that's on our south side, and has been for so many decades. And, you know, this, you know, this ongoing conflict turned genocide, apartheid, whatever it is, you know, morphing into in this, you know, most recent iteration, I mean, it's been around for so long that it's easy to just go, okay, it's, you know, they're just still doing it, right? But, but again, I want to thank you for educating us more specifically into ways that it has evolved into something more than what we've heard about for all these years. And I do stand for peace on principle, anywhere, anytime, everywhere, and would like to be supportive of your call for a council resolution, once we can agree on what that language is going to be. So I stand with you for peace.
Well, I wanted to say, and I probably ought to say this, like, not from the city council days, but since this is where I am right now, I would be willing to, I've read both resolutions, the Atlanta one and the other one, and I think we need to craft our own. And so I was going to volunteer my skills at least getting the grammar and the spelling right, to craft our own resolution that we might consider. So I was just going to say that.
Thank you. Counsel Tate.
Now, I'd certainly want to echo what Counselor Abbott has said, and, you know, what the Council President has said. You know, make no mistake about it, we, I stand for peace. You know, we have our own, you know, people that are falling dead right here in this city. And so I agree with what Counselor Abbott said, give us an opportunity to shape, an opportunity to shape a resolution that is going to include everybody in that resolution. And so just give us an opportunity to, you know, work that out. So again, we stand for peace, I stand on, stand for peace, working for peaceful city and a peaceful community every day for all people.
I want to thank our officers on duty this morning. This morning, we had Cedric Pinkert here, based in City Hall, Clyde Coleman from North Precinct, and Jason Hicks from North Precinct. Thank you, gentlemen, for being with us. This phone.
I have a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, being adjourned, thank you.